Okay, thank you very much. And welcome, Winthrop, to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of March 23rd, 2021. It's 7:00 PM and we are having this meeting remotely. It will be broadcast by WCAT Live and will be reshown throughout the weeks to come. The phone-in number tonight for our public comment and public hearings. There are both public hearings and two public comments tonight. Phone number is 1-646-558-8656. And the ID number is 82331191120. Pound sign. Okay, I'll repeat that again just before the public comment. Would you please have a roll call?
Counselor Jero.
Yeah.
Counselor Plakot.
Here.
Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counselor Terry.
Yep.
Counselor Honan.
Here.
Counselor Conti.
Present.
Counselor Frino.
Here.
Vice President Christopher.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
Here.
There being a quorum, I now call the meeting to order. And I would ask, let's see. Rob DiMarco, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and unmute yourself?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and just as.
Thank you. So, DiMarco. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 9th, 2021 meeting and it was sent out. All right, are there any additions? Are there any amendments? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye after your name is called.
Counselor Jero.
Yes.
Counselor Plakot.
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor Conti.
Yes.
Counselor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, the minutes are approved. The next thing we have is general information and recommendations. And up first on that is Astrid Wiens from the Board of Health with a new regulation that the Board of Health would like to see put in place and into our bylaws.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm here today to introduce the new body art regulations draft that we have put together in the last year and a half. It took us so long because we got interrupted by a little thing called COVID-19. So, we finalized them now. And if I can share a screen, I would love that so I can give you an overview of what's happening here. It'll be a quick presentation. I apologize if you hear kid noises in the background. So, the drafting process was initiated in 2018 to address delinquencies of existing regulations. Most importantly, they were outdated with regard to infection control, sanitation and safety. They did not address at all permanent makeup and its training requirements. And they also did not adequately specify training and apprenticeship requirements for the tattoo artists and the permanent makeup artists. Since then, we have approved, and I just want to make that point, two tattoo permits, including one apprentice and two studios and two permanent makeup permits. And then we also denied one permit for permanent makeup and was denied based on incomplete and non-verifiable training requirements. And this applicant was actually invited to reapply after completion and verification of the training. We researched communities in Massachusetts who had recent body art regulations put in place to identify some minimum standards for this, among those Boston, Cambridge, Peabody, Salem, Northampton, et cetera. And we also consulted with the American Academy of Micropigmentation for their standards and training requirements. A final draft of these regulations was approved unanimously by the full Board of Health on January 12th of this year. It was posted on the town website. And we also had a public hearing at our last Board of Health meeting at which both Mr. Kopeck and Mr. Miller, owners of Seaside Tattoo and Just Ink in Town, were present. They both lauded the regulations as being extremely clear, compliant with industry standards, and they had no additional comments. And we did not receive any other comments from the public. Again, our authority as a Board of Health is to make reasonable health regulations. And we decided to do this because body art is becoming more and more prevalent, especially in the field of cosmetics, cosmetic and permanent makeup. And knowledge and practice of universal precautions, sanitation, personal hygiene, sterilization, et cetera, should really be demonstrated to prevent the transmission of any diseases or injuries. So, it's really important to update those regulations. And that's why we undertook this pretty big effort, which was led by Susan McGuire, our former member who resigned at the end of last year. So, just to walk you through the important additions and changes that we put into place, I've sent you the completed body art draft in your email, so you can refer to it there. One thing that we included, which is very important in this day and age, is a requirement for single-use items, including inks, dyes and pigments. After we talked to our in-town tattoo artists, they told us that actually it's no longer common practice to use autoclaves and reuse any kind of needles. It's single-use nowadays. And so, we included a paragraph on use of single-use items and we require those. And we actually do not allow autoclaved reuse of other items any longer. We also included a very thorough workover of the application for body art practitioner permits. We now require, sorry, we now, it's actually, we didn't change the permit and how long it's being held. It's always valid for two years. We also did not change the fee schedule at this point. We will address that at a later time. But we included, and this is very important now, an extra paragraph for practitioners engaging only in the application of permanent makeup, since these people do not really need to have long, two-year training in tattoo practice and don't need the same certification standards. But they do have to have some minimum training requirements here that they have to demonstrate to the board before they get a license. So, this is now included formally in our application process. And then we also included an apprenticeship program paragraph, also very important. And that's been already used essentially by one of our practitioners in town who has an apprentice in his shop. And we also included an enforcement and penalty section to make sure that we can actually enforce non-compliance or compliance of these shops and make sure that we can find them and penalize them if they don't comply with our regulations. Just to add here, the current fees for licensure and effective date, the current fees are for the establishment, $300 annually. And for the body art practitioner license per practitioner, $300 every two years. And these new regulations may be voted on at our next Board of Health meeting on April 13th. And then they would likely go into effect on June 1st, 2021. So, that's our plan. That was basically it. Do you have any questions for me?
Does anybody have any questions for Astrid?
President Boncory, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Astrid, I'm ignorant when it comes to this stuff. What's the difference between permanent makeup and tattoo?
Well, tattooing is, you know, real tattoos that you apply to the skin, like, you know, very intricate, you know, artistic pictures and so on. And permanent makeup is when, for example, you tattoo lipstick or you tattoo the eyebrows or eyeliner and things like that. So, this can be done by, or is often done by estheticians. But they have to be obviously also trained. And they also have to fulfill certain sanitary requirements in their shops, et cetera. This is not something that can just be done in any studio.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, where is that coming from?
Rich, for you. Astrid, thank you for your presentation and your hard work. Just, are these permit fees and license fees in line with those other communities?
They're on the cheaper side. And as I said, we will actually, we'll address all the Board of Health fees in one of our coming meetings to see if we can adjust these to actually be more in line with what other communities charge. But these are relatively on the cheaper end of things.
Yeah, because we'd like to see us keep in pace with the other communities when it comes to those fees.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel President.
Yes, Counsel Honan.
Ms. Wiens, thank you very much for your presentation. I fully support.
Astrid, can you take the screen down so that we can see everyone?
I'm sorry.
It's not a problem. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wiens, for taking the time to update this. I applaud you and the rest of the board. It's very important to make sure that these practitioners are practicing safely. And I also fully support the tattoo artists and their businesses in town. I think it's, you know, it brings something needed to the town. They're good businesses and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Terry.
Hi, thank you, Astrid, for your hard work on this and the rest of the board. Just a quick question, I'm not sure if you did mention this and I missed it. Or is there a limit to the number of licenses we can give out? Like a license per se or whatever?
I don't believe there is.
Was there any discussion of that?
No.
Okay.
So, Christopher, do you have the end up?
Yeah, what is the difference between what we have in place currently and what we have, or what you're proposing to go forward with here? Is there like, what would the process look like for somebody today as opposed to under these regulations?
Well, the process is essentially the same. Somebody has to, you know, comply with the regulations and present all the documentation that we ask for. And then essentially, the documentation is similar. It's just that now we have very clear and transparent guidelines for these practitioners. So, they go through these regulations. It's all spelled out exactly what they need. And they have to have that documentation together and send it to Sharon Sicarella. And Sharon will then forward this to us. And then we will invite this practitioner to our Board of Health meeting and discuss, and then approve the license or deny the license. That's the process. And then on the other end, obviously, the shops also have to be licensed by the Inspection Services Department.
Thank you, Astrid. I am going to send this new regulation to the Rules and Ordinance Committee to update and incorporate it into our ordinance that we do now have on body art. So, Peter, you asked a question, but it's coming to you to look over. And after the next meeting on April, what date did you say it was, Astrid?
April 13th, I believe.
April 13th, maybe by the April 20th meeting or the following one, we will have a new regulation come from the Rules and Ordinance Committee. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Astrid, and thank the Board of Health for me for putting this together and saving the Rules and Ordinance Committee a lot of work. And also thank them for all the cooperation that they've given to me during this pandemic. You've done outstanding job of cooperation between the Board of Health and the council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And before I leave, I just want to commend Meredith Hurley and the MRC and that entire team for all the work they've been doing during the pandemic. It's been phenomenal. And you will probably mention this, our vaccination rate in town is incredibly high at 32%. We are really standing out amongst our neighboring communities. And it is not, in a small part, due to Meredith's tremendous efforts.
Thank you, you took the words right out of my mouth because that was my next topic.
Oh, I'm sorry, I took it away from you.
General information, that's okay, Astrid.
She deserves double praise.
She does deserve double praise. She's doing a yeoman's job of vaccinating, getting vaccines, first of all. That is the toughest job, getting vaccines every week. And getting out to the people that are housebound and getting them their shots. Right now, there's like, well, this is as of last Thursday because they're going to give us statistics every Thursday. As of last Thursday, we had 5,880 people that had received a vaccination, which is phenomenal because it's 31. something percent of our community. And that was last Thursday. By now, it's probably up about 35%. So, we're way ahead of surrounding communities that are in their 20s as far as percentage of vaccinations. And the vaccinations are pretty solid right through all our demographics. I mean, the white vaccination rate is 29.7. The black vaccination rate is 27.4. The Hispanic vaccination rate is 18.2. And the Asian vaccination rate in our town is 32.4. So, it is diverse. It's getting out to all members of our population of our town. And hopefully, the numbers are just going to go up with vaccinations. But just because we're getting all these vaccinations doesn't mean you're not supposed to wear your mask. So, please, wear your mask and continue social distancing when you're not with your own family or when you're going out to a restaurant. I've noticed the restaurants are getting busier and that is good. We want to see everybody survive, but follow the rules. Wear your mask except when you're sitting down eating. And maybe we won't have any more cases, any more positive cases. We're leveling off. Let's make it so that we have zero a week. And the vaccinations keep going up. Thank you very much. Thank you, Meredith. We're going to move on to our first public hearing. And the first public hearing is on a motion to transfer $506,163 from general stabilization to appropriate funding for the trash contract. I think this is on Counselor Terry.
Counsel President, before we get started on this, we just got updated information concerning the bins. And an updated quote as of today from Capital Waste, that number actually needs to be $524,363. So, before we even get into the discussion, that was some late-breaking news that I wanted entered into the conversation before we got too deep into it. Thank you.
Okay, what is that number again?
It's an additional $18,000 because of the cost of resin and the size of the bins that we're getting.
Okay, and who's taking this? You, the Finance Committee or?
No, I just wanted to make sure the correct information was out there for the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Terry, are you taking this?
So, I will take this, you know, discuss the public hearing quickly. And there's going to be much more talk about this in old business. But I guess we're looking for comments from the public. The Finance Committee did meet on this item, two meetings actually, which we'll go over in committee reports. The short answer is we do recommend, positive recommendation on the motion from stabilization to a trash line, to the trash line. We're in a position where, again, we hate being in this position, but we're in a position where we really don't have much of a choice. We have roughly three and a half months left of this fiscal year. And as of the end of this month, we will have zero money in the trash line. So, we don't have a lot of alternatives. I guess the one alternative was to try, which was brought up, to try to initiate a fee for fiscal '21, which the Finance Committee did not approve, does not recommend, and did not recommend at our last council meeting. Other than that, there was very little to do. We cannot go line by line through the budget, the current fiscal year budget, and try to move $500-plus thousand to cover this deficit. And if there is a contract approved tonight, that contract legally cannot be approved unless there is a full appropriation in that line item. So, at this time, there is not much of an alternative. So, we do recommend positive action on this motion, on this public hearing and motion.
Okay, motion will be taken under new business, of course. But is there any discussion from any counselor at this point during public hearing? All right, I'm looking at the attendees. Is there anyone with a hand up from the public that would like to speak about this appropriation under public hearing? I don't see any hands up. The people that are watching us. Okay. If there's no other questions, I will close this public hearing and we will move the issue to old business. First public hearing is closed. The second public hearing is a motion to transfer $29,000 from the water saw retained earnings for water rate and water loss study. Okay, I will now open that public hearing. Who is taking this forward? Is that also coming from Finance?
Yes, it is. And we do recommend positive, we have a positive recommendation on this. This is a much-needed and well-thought-out motion. We thank the town manager for bringing this to us. We have an extremely high water loss rate compared to other cities and towns. I know the DPW director is doing his utmost to try to figure this out. We do leak detections ongoing. So, we think it's the right thing to do to try to check our water rate and to try to do a study on our water loss. You know, we're at roughly 20-odd percent water loss, where we would like to be around 10%. And, you know, to put a number to that, we're talking in the millions of dollars. And that would be the best thing we could possibly find is some reason why we have such a high water loss. It could be as simple as a water meter at the MWRA. We don't know. But this is money that's well-spent, my understanding is. And maybe the CFO can have further clarification on this. But my understanding is from the CFO and the town manager that this is something that we can put in place in a relatively short timeframe for them to get going on this study. Can I, if I could ask through Counsel President for the CFO to speak on this?
Yes, I think she's ready to see you nodding along. Hi, Anna, how are you?
I'm well, how are you? Counselor Terry is correct. So, we went through a process to seek quotes for a study, you know, a really comprehensive study. You know, we, the town manager and I and Director Calla, you know, we've heard, we know from the community, the adjustments we've had to make on the rates in recent years and that there are questions about that. And also questions on just the water loss piece that Director Calla has spent a lot of time on and diligence on, that we, you know, want to bring in someone from outside to both look at that water loss and look at our rate, our rate structure and how it compares with other communities. And to do that as part of our budget process this year. So, we had a thought quote and we've identified a vendor who is well-known and does similar studies like this and has done similar studies with other MWRA communities. And they are on standby, ready to execute a contract with us once we have this funding in place. And we will, I'm literally scheduling a kickoff meeting and we have a data request from them and we're ready to get going with them with a goal to have the study complete prior to the council voting on the FY '22 budget. And so, if anything in the study were to lend recommendations for making any changes that could impact the appropriations there, that we would know that in time for the budget vote.
Thank you, Anna, and thank you for the great job that you're doing as a CFO. I appreciate what you have been doing.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any questions for either Anna or Steve or Counselor Terry? Hearing none from the council. Is there any people in the audience that would like to be heard? The public? Any public, have they hand up? I don't see any. Okay, moving on, hearing no other questions. I will now close the second public hearing on the $29,000 and we'll take that up under old business. Moving on to public comment, I'm going to give the number out again just because nobody called in during those two public hearings. The number is 1-646-558-8656. The ID number, once you call in, is 82331191120. Okay, we will now open public comment. Do we have any hands up? I do not see any of the attendees with a hand up.
I see no hands.
No hands. All right, we'll move on to our next issue. Do we have any correspondence, Denise?
I did receive from Mary Lou at the library that on April 7th, from 6:00 to 8:30 PM, they're having an active bystander training. This is sponsored by the Winthrop Foundation. You can contact the library for the Zoom link. It's also on the library's website and it's on the town council's website for any more information.
Any other correspondence, anybody wants to bring forward? Hearing none, we move on to committee reports. First up is Finance Committee.
The speed at which we're going through this meeting is commendable.
It is, I love it. I mean, the school committee last night only lasted 28 minutes. So, I don't think we can break that record, but we could try.
Well, we have had two Finance Committee meetings since our last council meeting. The first was on March 16th at 6:00. We had many attendees and had six items on the agenda. We had a motion to transfer $29,000 from water saw retained earnings for the water rate and water loss study, which we just discussed at the public hearing. And we will have positive recommendation on that. We had a motion to transfer $10,460 from water saw retained earnings for remote water monitoring equipment. We will also talk about that in old business and get a more clarification on that, maybe from Director Calla if he's here. But it's definitely something that we have positive recommendation on. There was another motion to direct the town manager to provide a 25% discount on, I believe it was fiscal '22 licensing fees. We had a lot of discussion on that. We think the motion had a lot of merits. But as we had in a previous meeting, we, you know, with the current financial situation, the way it is, we have a negative recommendation on that. There was also a motion for the council to vote to increase retirees' cost of living from $12,000 to $13,000. Again, that will come up in old business. I'll ask more information from the CFO on that. But we did have a lot of discussion on it. Again, a lot of merit. But again, in the financial condition of the town going into fiscal '22 right now, we do not have, we have a negative recommendation on that. There was a motion for the council to increase, oh, no, we just did that, motion to transfer $506,163 from general stabilization to appropriate funding of a trash deficit. Obviously, as we just talked about in public hearing, there was ample discussion on that and will continue to be. But we did come back with a positive recommendation on that and test that further in old business. There was much discussion revolving around trash proposals/contract, reinforce recommendation to not have a trash fee for fiscal '21. We discussed options for fiscal '22 and the potential $550,000 deficit from the fiscal '21 appropriation, options including to basically do nothing and to just make cuts within the budget, to initiate a pay-as-you-throw system, to initiate a flat fee, to initiate a discussion on a top two-and-a-half override, including a menu of items, to look into a enterprise fund for trash, including in a town appropriation along with a fee. Many comments and questions, how do we get there? Enforcement, are there an opt-out option? Talked about abatements, talked about getting other quotes from other companies. Talked about how we can educate the public on trash disposal. Talked about how we can educate the public on trash disposal and the use of recycling more. Talked about the number of users in town that would use the service, that do use the service. We talked about potential administration fees and enterprise fund. We talked about hopefully maybe getting some grants to help with education and the rollout of this. We talked about with the housing authority and any help we might be able to get to them, from them for the service we provide to them. And we also talked about the town and the school trash to make sure that they're on track with doing their part and helping to recycle and eliminate what they can from the solid waste. We had another meeting last night, 3:22. One topic being the continued conversation of how do we handle the fiscal '22 trash variance from fiscal '21 appropriation. We continued the discussion of options. Counselor Farino is very strongly in favor of a pay as you throw system. We discussed the length of time to implement such a policy. We're incredibly fortunate to have lots of information that was done many years ago by Emil Demento and others. We thank Emil for saving all that information. And there's an abundance of information for us to sift through in regards to that. We came to a consensus of at this point directing the town manager to include as part of his budget presentation, a new trash enterprise fund, which would be comprised of a town appropriation of roughly $1.2 million and an assumption of a fee, which we will generate roughly just under $600,000. We still have many questions that need to be addressed and some that we answer today, which we will discuss at our next finance committee meeting, which will be next Monday night, March 29th at 6 o'clock. Many of these questions were brought out earlier in this report. There is still a lot of work to do and we have much, we will have a much clearer and more concise recommendation in terms of how the fee will be implemented at our next council meeting. So we did come out of there with a recommendation or a directive for the town manager, which will enable clarity for him and the assistant town manager as they work their way through providing us with a balanced budget that, you know, we would like to direct them to look at start of a trash enterprise fund with a town appropriation and also a user fee as a, as roughly a third of that cost. And that is it for tonight.
Okay, any questions on this council with Christopher?
Do we have any enterprise funds currently that the town provides appropriation to every year?
We don't right now. We have in the past, we have had Pox and Rec, for example. The town appropriated money to them every year. Back in '07, '08, when we were going through recession and such, we tried to direct the, the Pox and Rec to make it on their own, which they were under great directorship of, of the director of Pox and Rec, we were able to do that and eliminated the appropriation. We also appropriated roughly $500,000 over a three-year period when we began the ferry enterprise fund. So, you know, through the hard work there and through, again, Sean's hard work at Pox and Rec, we were, we were able now to not have, as of now, we do not have an appropriation for an enterprise. But it's not, we're not reinventing the wheel here. This is something that has been done in the past.
They are, almost every one of them started with money. It came from the council.
Yes, and ultimately.
Pox and Rec, all of them, basically you have to start somewhere.
Right, and ultimately, any enterprise fund that we have now, ultimately, the town is responsible. If there is a shortfall in any of the enterprise funds, which we have done, you know, quite recently with a few of the enterprise funds. So we might not have started with an appropriation, but at the end of the year, to clean up any balances that were left, we did make an appropriation. So yes, is the answer to your question, I guess.
Does anyone else have any questions on the finance committee's report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the ordinance, Wilson Ordinance Committee report.
Yeah, so we met last Thursday. We had three items on the agenda. The first thing that we took up was a change in language. Currently on the books, we have a one-way on Park Ave from Crystal Cove to Beacon Street. And we, that's not how it's done in practice. So it was brought to our attention and that's the proposal. And it was passed unanimously through the committee was to change that from on Park Ave from Beacon Street to Crystal Cove. That's the way that it already is. And that's the way that we'd like it to read in our ordinances. The other two items that we took up were, was kind of an overall discussion on parking management and the Point Shirley parking pilot program. Both of them were brought to us through memos from TSAC on the overall parking management memo that they had sent to us. TSAC asked that we pass on to planning, the memo on to the planning and appeals boards, which are the, the boards that oversee relief or special permits or variances to, for parking, because a lot of the issues that TSAC has been taking up has been around limited parking in neighborhoods. And a lot of it is sort of out of their purview and they need, they asked that, that the memo be sent to the appeals board and the planning board. And not that, the committee certainly didn't believe that we had any oversight over those, over those boards or anything, but we did feel it was appropriate that if TSAC wants to be a help to them, that they could do so. So we ended up voting to say that it was fine. We are going to forward that memo to the planning and appeals boards. On the Point Shirley, on the Point Shirley parking program, TSAC submitted us a report that was sent around to the council on the Point Shirley parking program. Some of the issues that were raised around it was that there was issues with enforcement, there were spillover issues into other neighborhoods. And also the committee felt that there was a lot of issues around visitor parking. And they suggested either giving residents some sort of more visitor parking permit or to designate certain areas in the point as, as visitor parking so that you wouldn't have this issue where people couldn't make day trips to their friends who live up the point without one of these parking passes. I think the committee came to the consensus that we felt like this was an issue that is not necessarily unique to Point Shirley and it's something that we hear a lot about in, in just about every neighborhood in town as far as parking management. And we wanted to work with, with the town planner and the town administrators to sort of come up with a plan that would encapsulate all of the, the whole community and not just one area. And not to say that we don't think that it's merited, but I do think that there are some kinks that we need to shake out before we do anything permanent. And that's my report.
Okay, do anybody have any questions for the Wilson Ordinance Chairman? Hearing none, we'll move on. The next committee is the Appointments Commissioning Committees, and that's Councilum Damaco.
Thanks, President. So we have undertaken the town employee reviews. We did receive self-assessments from both the town manager, the town clerk, the clerk and the auditor. We did get them roughly close to our meeting on Monday. So instead of rushing through them, we set a follow-up meeting for this Friday. So we would complete our review process in March as determined by the chatter. And we will be able to give a full report on that at the first, at the, at the next town council meeting. Also, any counselors, we did receive some feedback on the town employees. Any counselors who have not sent us any feedback, if you feel like doing that, we are taking them up until probably Thursday because we're meeting on Friday night. So if you want to send something on the town employees to us, please do so. I do want to thank the town employees for taking the time to fill out the self-evaluation forms. Anybody's ever had to do that at work knows it's a pain in the neck and nobody likes to do it. But thank you all very much for taking the time to do that.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the Appointments Committee? Okay, hearing none, we will move forward to the town manager's report. Austin, you're on.
Thank you, good evening. First off, I appreciate all the hard work that the finance committee has been doing concerning the trash fee. I know it's been kind of a difficult situation and some more robust public discussion on the matter. I would say in terms of the public education and implementation portion of it, I'm looking to reinvigorate the Zero Waste Committee. So I'm going to be appointing two people to that committee tomorrow. One of them being Mark Abashon, who was very engaged in a couple of the finance committee meetings concerning the solid waste discussion. And Wendy Malar Page as well. Tracy had been on the committee previously and with some of her appointments with the council was unable to keep up with the commitment. So we'll get some fresh blood on there to answer some of these questions concerning like enforcement and rollout and things like that, because some of these things are grant funded. And I want this group to kind of have a menu of options of things for us to try to work on and help make some of these decisions and have some of the public meetings and do some of the reporting on this stuff. So excited to add some new people to that committee. Beyond that, I would say that I would like Meredith Hurley to unmute herself and give a quick update concerning where we're seeing with COVID.
Hi, everybody, how are you?
I'm Meredith.
Pop over and share my screen real quick. All right, so some updates for you all. So confirmed cases as of today were 2,079. Remaining constant were 35 deceased. We have 32 isolated, which means that our numbers are trending down. I'm seeing more of a, I'm seeing more of a leveling out unfortunately with those numbers. And we have over 2,000 that have now recovered. Our incidence rate is, is 2.4, sorry, is 2.16, which is still going down. Our percent positive is 2.6% and we're still a yellow designated community. The big news is the vaccine rollouts, obviously. So as was mentioned before, this is where, so our population, so our population being 18,846. So with that, so with that, over the age of 18 is 15,360. So right now, as of what DPH has, has told us as of last week, we have had 5,880 people vaccinated. DPH is saying that we have, that we have had 31.2% of people vaccinated. But they're using the number, what I figured out today was that they're using our total population number of 18,846. So when I went back and actually calculated it based on those that are over the age of 18, which is what we are not seeing, we're not seeing potentially more than a handful of folks between 16 and 18. Pfizer is the only vaccine that is eligible to be vaccinated for those 16 and up. So assuming that all of those 5,880 people that have been vaccinated here in Winthrop were over the age of 18, it reduces down our denominator, which also increases the percent of people that were vaccinated. So, so whereas the state is saying that we have 31.2% of people, I think it might be closer to 38% of, of adult residents here in Winthrop have been vaccinated, which is excellent. I think, I think that we're on target. It is not without a massive effort. The amount of staff time, volunteer time that has gone into this effort, whether it be, you know, we've only, so we have only received 450, we've received 500 doses, we've pushed out 450 doses to this point directly through our, our health department. The majority of that is going either through the community health centers or through the MassVax sites. But with that is a lot of staff time and a lot of volunteer time in addition to administering vaccines, but also helping to make appointments, getting the information out there, directing people to the correct sites, how to do it. And it's changing constantly. It changes, you know, it feels like every third day, we're crafting a new communication to the community. We're trying to, you know, video, send out videos for WCAT to pick up, really trying to hit multiple different pathways to, to make sure that folks are feeling, at least they're getting the information. Of course, the supply is still extremely constrained. So as of right now, these are the phase, we're in one, we're in phase one and also phase two. That means anybody over the age of 60 is now eligible to be vaccinated in addition to the previous, the previous classifications. Effective April 5th will be people over the age of 55, also people with one comorbidity. And then beginning April 19th, people aged 16 and older. So it'll be, that will, that's when we're fully in phase three, open to anybody 18, I mean, 16 and over. So what I'm suggesting for people to do, even if you are not currently eligible, is to go to the, to the state site, which is, let me just fast forward, which is vaccinesignup.mass.gov. I did it the other day. Truthfully, I did it, I did it for my 18-year, my 17-year-old son who's going to be 18 in July. So I signed him up so that when he's eligible to be vaccinated sometime, hopefully after the middle of April, most likely it will be further on in the summer. But at least we have his information in there. So that's what I'm advising people to do. Even if you are not part of the current eligibility, go ahead and sign up for the state system and they'll alert you when it's your time to make an appointment. It takes a bit of the anxiety away around these dates when people are feeling like this urgency of like, I'm going to miss something, I'm going to miss my dose. And kind of it's, we've, we've seen a definite decrease in the call volume at the emergency operations center of people frustrated with the system with a lot of questions. So this is just a breakdown of our local vaccine efforts. So we've received 100 Moderna doses that were transferred from East Boston Neighborhood Health Center, 300 from MassDPH and another 50 Moderna from MassDPH. So this is kind of where it's all been spread out. On Monday, we did an additional first doses of homebound residents in Winthrop Housing and a few additional spread throughout the community. Tomorrow, we're doing 20 doses, 10 first doses and 10 second doses. So, and then, you know, we'll be wrapping up. I think our last round of second doses will be, is scheduled for sometime around April 19th. And this too, you know, is just local sites. Right now, the MassVax sites such as Fenway Park, the Danvers and Doubletree, Gillette Stadium, they are all using the state site, which is vaccinesignup.mass.gov. That's the site that I was just talking about, that I've used a few times to try and get people at least into the wait room, the waiting, the wait line, the virtual wait line to make an appointment. These are also the other sites locally that are doing vaccinations. Here is also, East Boston is continuing to do their vaccines. And I'm encouraging people to make an appointment by either calling if that's where their comfort level is. The phone number is 617-568-5870. Or there's also an online system with East Boston. And how can we help at the emergency operations center? So what I would say is that we can try to assist with making online vaccine appointments at the sites that are not part of the mass vaccination effort. We can also help if folks are not able to get onto the internet to get onto the vaccine wait site. So there's an option that you can help people or make, make appointments for people or make requests for people that are not yourself. We can coordinate transportation. Right now, we are not getting any additional first doses that we know of from the, from the, from the state government for homebound residents in particular. So we're, we have a very, a very organized waitlist system. And with that, you know, what the state is telling us is that sometime later in April, they're going to be standing up their own homebound vaccine program. I haven't heard too much more. Um, I haven't heard too much more about the specifications of that. It was supposed to be a little bit earlier, but I think it got pushed back a bit. Um, and also just a reminder, the project beacon site in Winthrop is closing this coming Friday. Um, with the idea, you know, I know that the center business project is going to be coming back into full swing around there. And um, if there's a potential for us, we don't know. I honestly don't have any idea yet as to. If or when the state is going to task local health departments with vaccines for the general population. Um, but that would be kind of the ideal site if we can or could or would be able to stand up um a vaccine site. For general population. Um, and also to kind of piggyback on what um council president. Boncory had said is, you know, we are going in the right direction for sure. Um, you know, some current projections right now that are coming out of Europe is that they are now seeing an increase. Um, and historically through the last fourteen months, we're about three to four weeks behind what Europe is seeing. So um, we have variants here in Massachusetts. We've been alerted to variant cases being here in Winthrop. Um, that's not a shock. Um, the variants are really widespread throughout the whole United States right now. So it's not, you know, I don't think people have to be scared about that. But I do think that wearing a mask and distancing is um just as important right now as ever. Um, I know we're all really tired this far into the pandemic and the weather is becoming nicer. And I feel like all of our, you know, it's, there's hope again. Um, but if it's just simply just wearing a mask and being um. A bit more diligent about that, uh, we would really appreciate it because we do not want to see the case come. You know, we had six cases today. And it's, it feels a lot better than when we had forty-one cases a day. So I definitely do not want to go back to that, to that point. So um, it's all good news. We're going in the right direction. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you guys have them.
Does anybody have any questions from Meredith? Counselor Terry and then Counselor Farino.
Thank you. Uh, again, it seems like, you know, words kind of get shallow and we keep thanking you week in and week out. But what you've done is is so appreciated. I'm sure by, I could speak for everyone on the council on this. And and just by the citizens of the town. So thank you so much for what you do. I also want to thank uh East Boston Neighborhood Health. They've really stepped up and and done a great job for the citizens of Winthrop. Um, you did talk about Europe and that's been on the news a lot. And how are we, how are they in relation to us and vaccines and as far as percentage of the population? Are they trailing us a little bit? Is that potentially why they're getting a surge or what?
I don't, so I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure where they are with their vaccine efforts, like percentage wise. Um, also because they were rolling out very heavily the AstraZeneca um vaccine. Which is a two-dose model like Pfizer and like Moderna. Um, but they were, they were using it as a one-dose model. Primarily just to kind of eh bring down their surges. So um, something was better than that, you know, than, you know, the two-dose and and all the logistics that go with that. So I'm not quite sure where they're at in terms of their percent population vaccinated. Um. And, you know, I, there's been more talk about variants and and things like that over in the European countries than um we've been hearing here. So I'm not quite sure um what is actually driving the numbers in Europe. I do think that. Um, it's uncoordinated, a little bit like what we're seeing here. Um, where the countries, you know, I know that Ireland, for example, is still very much in a lockdown. But other countries are starting to um peel those back a bit. Um, and see more, you know, more businesses open. Which is what we want to say, like we, we, I, I would not advise that, you know, we go back to like a full lockdown. Um, because of the economic, you know, ramifications of that. But I do think just kind of being more diligent in wearing our masks and people are traveling more. Travel is really in, you know, human mobility drives a lot of these pandemic and endemic kind of activities, unfortunately. So.
Thank you, Meredith, again.
Councilor Farino, it's.
And I uh did owe Councilor Terry's uh thankfulness uh of your service, Meredith. The community is so lucky to have you and um, we're all very proud of the job you've been doing. Uh, just uh, one of the, one of the things I noticed on the sites for vaccination, you didn't list the Wonderland site. I think that's an East Boston Neighborhood Health Center site.
Oh, did they open that? Sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, great. Oh, good. They were having some lighting issues because of the disco balls. A few weeks ago, they didn't know how to like navigate that. So that's good. That's great. Sorry. Yeah, I'll add that on.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Gerald.
Uh, of course, thank you, Meredith, for everything that you've done. Um, two quick questions. Um, the first one, you mentioned that the project beacon site in Winthrop is closing down on the twenty-sixth. Is the next closest location for folks to go to Suffolk Downs or is that closing as well?
Nope, that one's staying open. Um, they've actually extended um Suffolk Downs and I believe Lynn. Um, through June or like around mid-June is where, um, they've already extended them too.
Got it. And um, do we have any information on if the CVS in Winthrop is receiving vaccinations? Or you can um book a a reservation at that location? Or is it just uh, you know, East Boston and I think we're there maybe?
I think that there's talk of them potentially, um, and I haven't had it confirmed by anybody at the CVS in Winthrop yet. Um, I think that they were trying, they were potentially starting like a waitlist of some sort. In the event that they were to receive um Johnson and Johnson vaccines. Um, the state was, was able to get an additional eight thousand kind of surprise doses of Johnson and Johnson. That they weren't planning for last week. Um, but other than that, they're planning their next round of Johnson and Johnson vaccines. To come into the state sometime in early April. Um, and it's unknown yet how they're going to deploy them. Initially, they were deploying them more so to the um larger health centers. Um, and now I didn't see them really too close to Winthrop in terms of like the community sites yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Again, Meredith, if somebody else has any questions, you are doing a exemplary job. And I thank you for taking my calls all the time and keeping me informed of what's going on. I also want to thank uh the MRC for helping you to to run.
Amazing.
Two clinics that we did do where we gave out uh vaccinations in clinics. And we, you got quite a few people in in those two uh, those two uh situations where we were able to set up a clinic. And to the ladies that are going door to door with you and giving uh shots to the homebound, thank them all for us, please.
I will, for sure. And also Winthrop firefighters that tag along with us. So they, they, they come with us. Um, I, it's like a team of three. So they've uh, they've been really good sports and they tell me that they like it. So um, I'm happy about that.
It's great.
Thank you all. I appreciate um all your kind words.
Uh, Austin, you have more for your uh town managers report?
Um, Rob has his hand up, so I wanted to defer to him.
Well, go ahead.
No, that, that's okay. My, my question was actually to the town manager. So if you're not done, Austin, by all means, finish up and then we can address it.
Um, the, so last item that I'll touch on and then we can uh get into questions. Um, where I had mentioned in the last meeting concerning bringing back employees um to be working um more on site. For April first, um, we're still in line for that. Um, it's like May first for uh the public to have some interaction. Um, with Town Hall. Um, what we're looking at and what we're working through is having it on an appointment basis. Having the Harvey Room open from nine AM to noon, Monday through Thursday. Um, to have people who need to do in-person transactional business. Um, they'll have the ability to do that. We're working our way through how to handle that though. Um, our biggest thing is that we understand that people enjoy congregating in the building and kind of moving from office to office. Um, and we're still not at that point of feeling comfortable about that. Um, so we're looking at May first to have some more public in the building. Uh, concerning meetings, um, and having those in person. Um, again, not opposed to that at all. Um, if there are members of the council that want to have meetings in person. Um, I, the Harvard Room uh will be made available. That said, um, it's still going to be a situation with masks. Um, and we're still working through the feedback um issues that we're going to have with utilizing Zoom. Because there aren't um the remote cameras that WCATV can utilize in that room. Um, feeding into Zoom and then having you all be able to respond to people who are talking over video and stuff like that may be a little tricky. So we still have to work through that part of it because uh based off of the discussions that have been within council meetings. Um, I think we're going to be in some type of model where some are in person and some are uh participating in the meetings remotely. Um, so I want to make sure that we can accommodate that. And it's not just for you all on the council, it's also for the members of the community to be able to accommodate them for public comment and things like that. Because um, there's still going to be limitations on how many people can be in a room at a time. So um, I don't think this is a situation where we can um say that when we start having some more people having in-person uh meetings. That we're going to have like a crowd of people lining up for public comment or something like that. Um, that, that's not going to work. Um, so it's basically going to be um you all on the council who would like to meet in person. Um, we're trying to figure out solutions for that. But again, this is why we invested in technology last year for the laptops. This is why we invested in the remote cameras for the Harvard Room for WCATV. Uh, our police department is working um that we may use a different platform other than Zoom. That has a camera that moves based off of who's speaking and things like that. So all kinds of fancy stuff. We're trying to make it work. Because we do understand that um the kind of uh modernization of these meetings and the ability to uh meet remotely. And having a little bit more of the public weigh in in different ways, um, is to the benefit of the town, from my estimation. So we're going to try to figure out how to um both accommodate those needs and also um allow some in-person meeting as well. Um, and that's, that's just for the council and uh school committees been going about it their own way as well. Um, town boards and committees, um, I would still recommend that they meet uh remotely. Um, we still have the tools available for them to do that. Um, and again, it's not um one person or the other that we're looking to. Um, impact, what we're trying to do is lessen the impact of um people that uh. We don't really have a say over the rules of them coming into the building. Um, that's what we have to limit our interactions with as much as possible. Um, until we continue to get good news about vaccination rates and things like that. And standards at both the state and the CDC start to change. Um, and with that, that's um all I have for this week. I'm happy to answer.
Any questions, uh, Councilor DeMarco, you had your hand up first?
Yeah, no, this actually, uh, Town Manager Austin, I'm glad, I'm glad you actually said that because it plays right into my next question. Um, getting back to the library, um, specifically the library, I was trying to think of. Uh, a way to address this that would actually make sense to you, but you threw out the May first date. And you know, when I, when I heard May first, I'm like, that's five weeks away. That makes sense. I mean, we're in phase four of reopening restaurants. Are open now at full capacity. You know, it'd be nice with safety precautions in place uh and capacity limits. To get that library open full time.
Yep, um, I, I agree. Um, I, I spoke with um the library union last week and the representative. Um, it is, um, I'm personally still learning a little bit about it. Because um, this is something that a lot of libraries are dealing with. Um, and it's not necessarily like the library programming, it's how do you allow for in-person browsing? Um, and how do you regulate that? And that's the tricky thing is that we have people who really just want to be in the building. And that's uh kind of where they do their business of the day type of thing. That's going to be very difficult for us to allow people to do. Because we, we want to try to limit how long people are in spaces and how long people are browsing. So we're coming up with rules in a space where there haven't been rules before. So we've been talking with them about it. Um, the um Board of Trustees has also been um appointed as a screening committee concerning candidates for the library director position as well. Um, so we're starting to make progress. Um, that outdoor park lit, um, with, you know, the intent was. We, I know you can't come into the building, but we want to still give people a place to kind of interact with their materials. Um, so we're going to keep trying to be creative. Um, and then um, we are having discussions with the libraries. We don't know necessarily, from my perspective, I'm not sure what that necessarily means in terms of hours of open staffing levels and things like that. Um, but we are trying to work through a plan um that we can keep our staff safe and um have some. Uh, some type of interaction, more interaction with the building.
You think May first is a realistic date?
Um, I think we, if we try to handle it similar to um the uh harder room. That we do it on an appointment basis and we almost maybe have members of the staff work as like liaisons for people. That want to come through the library type of thing. It, it could be some type of model like that. Um, I would like to. I'm trying to still figure out what's happening in other libraries because a lot of libraries are just the um checkout, um curbside checkout. And that type of stuff still. Um, some have had limited appointment basis for browsing. Um, but it's the, the big thing initially was.
It's all over the map. It's all over the map in other communities.
Yeah, how long do you quarantine materials is something that's come up that it seems like we may not have to quarantine our materials as long as we have been. Which then that uh changes the turnaround time for our um curbside check-in and checkout type of stuff. So we may be able to kind of trim that time down a little bit without the quarantine of materials. And then we also talk about the limited in-person interaction type of stuff. But um, that's still, we're still working on that. But we are, I mean, we are looking at it. It's uh Mary Lou and I just had a meeting with Stacy last week. With some of the representation. So um, it's not something that we're lost on.
Okay.
Isn't Boncory?
Yes, uh, Councilor Clark.
Okay, Town Manager Faison, uh, we have an election coming up next week. What can you tell us about how we're set up for that?
Uh, sorry about that. Um, set up similar to uh the primary election that happened earlier um in the month. Um, same voting locations as that. Um, so um, the mid, the new middle high school is not going to be a voting location. The old middle school is going to be the voting location again, um, along with traditional voting locations in town. Um, and this is for um, the state representative seat. Um, that was vacated by uh Speaker DeLeo. Um, so that is this coming Tuesday. Um, and I believe that um Joanne Domato has um, from my estimation, everything under control. Um, we're onboarding um poll workers and things like that. So I, I believe we have that under control, Councilor.
Is there a drop-off box like there was previously?
Ooh, I don't have, so we, uh, I believe there's a drop-off box. Denise, you want to answer that? Sorry.
There, there is a drop-off box right outside the uh rear door by the parking lot and there's one at the front door.
Okay, and is there early voting?
There is not early voting. That is something that um we did uh for the um statewide federal elections. Because um we received some additional funding for that and some of that was dictated by law. Um, we didn't, we weren't able to accommodate the early voting this time around, from my understanding. Um, being that this is a smaller scale um election.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Farino.
Hi, uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, Austin, um, I noticed today it was going down and grabbing a bite to eat down the center. And uh that they started uh construction. Could you give us a little update?
Um, sure, I would ask uh Director Calla to update on that. I know that uh we had posted the two-week look ahead. For the CBD project on the town website as well, but uh Steve can give you a better update on that.
Sure, so, so uh, good evening, everybody. So uh, Monday, uh, yesterday, Gioso was back on site. Uh, they were on site last week, set up their staging areas, but their, their excavation uh and utility work resumed yesterday. They're working over uh in the Putnam Jefferson Street intersection, right now lowering a water main to complete the drainage. Uh, from that intersection down to French Square. Uh, then they'll be uh resuming their drainage over on. Um, Somerset and Cottage Park, and then they'll, they'll roll into the uh electrical uh conduit work. And, 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 and the additional phases throughout the calendar year. Um, they've submitted a schedule. That has them on target to finish the, the, the uh, the project substantially complete by December of this year. Uh, they're optimistic that they may be fully complete, but the uh, the, their schedule does have them completing punchless. Items um in the spring of two thousand twenty-two. Um, that's where they are right now.
Okay, anyone else, uh Council Chair?
Uh thank you, Council President, um Council Farino stole my first question, but in the same light. Could you give us an update on the tennis court project, I see that that is well underway.
Um I would defer to the uh Miller Field Committee on that. Sure, the, I excuse me, the SBAC on that.
The um what's a, it's a group, it's a tandem project with the Miller Field and the SBAC. And uh it is on going well, um the demolition obviously has been done. They are on target to complete all the work that's done down there by the fourth of July. Great, they they've been putting in the footings, they've been putting in the drainage uh during the past week. And uh it's it's pretty well underway, it's it's moving along.
Thank you.
Council Terry?
Thank you, and just um I I think Council Farino had brought up the. Or maybe Council Flok had brought up the election, somebody had brought up the election, but and I I just wanna thank Director Calla because I, you know, we had brought it to. The director's attention that, you know, Gioso was setting up last week and they were setting up in front of the rink and using. A good percentage portion of that parking lot, um but Director Calla has promised us that during the day of the election, there will be limited access for them. Uh cuz we don't want disruption for the voters that will be going in, so anybody from precincts one, two, and five. That will be voting there can be rest assured that there will be uh relatively easy access to park there. And just a a quick thing for the Director Cal mentioned that. The contract stated that they would have punch, I thought the contract stated they would have punchless items in January of twenty twenty-two. Are you sure it said the spring of twenty twenty-two?
It's all weather dependent, uh I think they would prefer to wrap up as quickly as possible. You know, i- it would potentially roll into the spring if if weather didn't cooperate uh in, you know, in the January timeframe. Again, they're optimistic that they're gonna be complete by uh by December. Um and that's what they're, that's what they're striving for.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any uh questions with the town manager?
One thing I I just wanted to note is uh from the American Rescue Plan, um we're still getting more information by the day of what Winthrop is entitled to. Um but it seems like um there is money that's allocated for us in the local aid. Um as well as uh since we don't have a county government um in Suffolk, what would have been allotted to the county uh based off of population? We are entitled to as well, um so there are um multiple pockets of money in there. That we are still um trying to ascertain and understand what we can use that money on. Um and coming from uh Sean Cronin, who is one of the Lieutenant Governor's right-hand uh people. Um who uh works in DOR and runs Division of Local Services, um they still don't know. So the state can't even dictate to municipalities how we can spend this money, they've given us some primers on it, but we still don't totally comprehend. So there is money coming that we're excited about, um but we don't know how we can spend it yet, um which will be even more exciting, um so thank you.
Okay, I anticipated a good portion of that nineteen trillion dollars. Okay, uh we're gonna move on to uh. The school committee report and the school committee report is that school committee has met three weeks in a row. Uh the the last meeting before yesterday's, uh we voted to bring the kids back. To school on the fifth, bring all kids uh back to the school on the fifth. Part of the problem with doing that was the uh capacity to have. Children eating uh their lunches in cafeteria and maintaining a six-foot. Distance between people while they were eating, uh cuz when they're reading, they have their mask off, they have to still be six feet away. Uh while they're being taught, they can be three feet away, so we have the uh. Capacity to do the three feet away everywhere except for uh the middle school and part of the high school. Uh but it's being worked on, uh they ordering chairs and uh some tables. Uh they got in a hundred and fifty-five chairs yesterday, they're waiting for another six hundred and fifty uh chairs to come in for the middle school. Part of the problem we had is that um middle school, when we built it, they had two people on a desk. Uh in the shared desk and now with uh COVID, they can't do that any longer, so they have to remove those desks. And bring in the single uh student desk, uh that is going on, they've been ordered, they're supposed to be delivered, as I said. A hundred and fifty-five chairs and tables were delivered yesterday, uh to try to get some help. Uh with the planning on what we're doing with the the seating for lunches, I believe there are tents gonna be coming in and uh. We had uh Department of Education. Uh elementary and secondary education come in, uh today, they had a meeting at eleven o'clock this morning. With the superintendent and they are going to try to uh give us a plan. And help us plan how we're gonna get everybody seated and how we're gonna get everybody uh in the right seat at the right time. There was a lot of consternation about people might be sitting on floors or with uh their laptops on their laps and that's not gonna happen. Uh the way the motion was passed is that everybody would be back on the fifth. Provided that uh they are able to do it without breaking any rules or regulations. And that decision is gonna be made by the superintendent and the attorney who handles uh the school committee's. Business, so um we're looking forward to everybody getting back. The same time, I wanna congratulate all the sports teams that did fantastic, I mean, it was great that we got the sports team in basketball. And uh you know volleyball been playing, I saw uh both soccer teams won yesterday. It was in the Herald today that they both uh linked uh Lynn Tech to zero, both the boys and the girls. Of course, the winter football team blinked uh Sogus at twenty-eight to nothing last past week, so uh. It it's great, the kids uh get their activities going, all sports are working, uh everybody is uh. Doing very well with that, there haven't been any problems, uh there was a delay of the first game. Uh football due to pandemic uh and someone having some contact from another team, so that was put off. But uh now everything's working smooth and everybody is uh doing great and I'm real proud of the teams for the. Uh way they've been winning these games, let's keep it going, we went through Vikings. All right, that is the school committee report, so anybody have any questions on that? Hearing none, let's move forward to old business and the first item on old business is twelve A, a motion to transfer five. Hundred and six thousand one hundred and sixty-three from the general stabilization fund. Someone please put it that on the table and we'll amend it to the. Uh five hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and uh three hundred and sixty-three, but I think the original motion has to be put up first.
Now, Mayor, I move that council vote to transfer the five hundred and six thousand one sixty-three from general stabilization. To appropriate for the updated cost of the town's fiscal year twenty-one waste removal contract or take any other action relative. There too, it did come out of committee with positive recommendation, it does not need a second. And I would make a motion to amend it to five twenty-four three sixty-three.
Okay, is there a second to the amendment to amend this to five hundred and twenty-four thousand three sixty-three?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Councilor Farino, who's also on the finance committee, believe, is there any discussion on the amendment? Council Terry?
On the amendment now, you know, we we don't wanna get into the whole contract negoti- uh discussion here, but. There was a contract that we got the other night that was signed by Capital Waste for one amount, how could it be changed after it was signed? I mean, that's in addition, you know, that's a lot of money for these bins that, you know, we're one year into the contract, we don't even have.
Um it deal, the contract talks about the financing of the bins, it didn't give exact amounts of what the cost of the bins would be. Um so they're allowing us to have zero percent financing over five years um to spread out the payment. Uh for them instead of paying for them in a one-time thing, um that's what is detailed in the contract, not the exact.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, I will put the uh amendment to a vote, uh and then we will put a second vote on the motion as amended. All those in favor of the amendment to uh. Change it from five oh six to five twenty-four three sixty-three, please indicate by saying aye when your name is called.
Council Rijero?
Yes.
Council Placat?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
No.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Amendment carries on the main motion now is amended, all those in favor. Of the main motion to transfer five hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. From stable, general stabilization fund to appropriate funding for new trash contract. Please signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Council Rijero?
Yes.
Council Placat?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
No.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passed. Next motion is for the town council to approve the town manager to sign a five-year contract. Did that come out of committee?
It did not.
Okay. Is it on the table for a vote at this motion? Is some, is any committee bringing that forward?
I think it would have to go through finance consent, especially since it's considering such a large amount of money, it did not get put to finance. So I do not see how it can be voted on this evening.
Okay. All right, uh I want to take a motion to. Table this to our next meeting and refer the motion to sign the five-year contract to. The finance committee.
Uh President Boncory?
Yes.
Um all I see is motion for the town council to approve the town manager to sign a five-year contract with. And I I just need some clarification on what that, what that with is.
It's with uh capital waste.
That's with capital waste.
Cuz I can't, I can't sign anything longer than a three-year contract.
The town manager can only sign up to three years, by doing a five-year contract with capital waste, we were able to. Amortize out further, you know, the payments with barrels, payments for this and that, so the five-year contract was. Something that was good for us, that contract.
No, that that.
I believe everybody has that. The contract was sent to everybody?
Yes, it was sent out with the motion also, yep.
Okay, all right, so I suppose if we try to vote it tonight, we put it off to the next meeting anyway. So uh.
Motion to refer.
Motion to refer it to the finance committee uh and take it up next meeting as old business. All right, moving on.
Do we need a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I'm sorry. Council Rijero?
Yes.
Council Placat?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, the next motion is to transfer twenty-nine thousand dollars. In the water sewer retain earnings for water rate and water loss study. Uh who's gonna lead on that is Counselor Terry out of finance?
Yes, it did come out of finance again that we moved the town council vote, the use of retained earnings, water and sewer fund and the amount of twenty-nine thousand for the cost associated with. A water loss audit and water rate study or take any other action relative there too. It did come out of committee with positive recommendation, we discussed this earlier in the meeting. It's the right thing to do, the people want it, the town council wants it, I think it's time, we could do it in a timely manner. And hopefully get some information back before um the fiscal twenty-two budget policy uh budget discussions end.
Coming out of committee, it doesn't need a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, it is a motion to transfer twenty-nine thousand dollars from water and sewer to do a water loss study. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Council Rijero?
Yes.
Council Placat?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council President? Motion carries, yes, I move that the town council vote the use of retained earnings for water and sewer fund in the amount of ten thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. For the purchase and installation of a remote water distribution monitoring system or take any other action relative there too. This did come out of committee with positive recommendation, I I would ask either Director Calla or CFO Friedman just to give. A little more clarification for the counselors if they need it on this.
Is there any other further discussion on it? Seeing none, I will uh. Take a vote on the motion to transfer ten thousand four hundred and sixty dollars from water and sewer. For remote water monitoring equipment.
Council Rijero?
Yes.
Council Placat?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, the next uh motion coming with council is twelve A and it's a. A motion to increase the retirees' cost of living from twelve thousand to thirteen thousand dollars, finance committee.
Uh thank you, Council President, this is a a motion to see if the council would approve the retirement board's vote to increase the cost of living base. From twelve thousand to thirteen thousand, consistent with the provision of section nineteen of chapter one eighty-eight in the Acts two thousand ten. This was discussed in committee, it it definitely has uh some merits to it, a lot of merits to it. Um but with the fiscal constraints that we have right now going into twenty twenty-two. We did not feel that this should have positive action taken, we uh do look forward to discussing it again going into fiscal twenty-three.
How much money would that, would it be?
If I, I'm gonna read, defer to CFO Friedman on this.
So if the council were to approve this change, um under our current funding schedule. Uh for the town's unfunded pension liability, which is four percent um annually. Sort of an annual increasing contribution of four percent each year up to our target date to pay off, which right now is twenty thirty. Um this this change going from a twelve thousand dollar to thirteen thousand dollars or base for the COLA. Means that our contribution for FY twenty-two would increase by about sixty thousand dollars, and then that would incrementally increase. Up to um about eighty thousand dollars in twenty thirty, and then after that point when we are ideally fully funded. Um based on sort of how our actuarial evaluations continue to go, any assumptions in those. Then we would have, this is out about on an ongoing basis around eighteen thousand dollars sort of increasing um uh going forward. Um and we just based them where um that just as background uh from the retirement board, uh it's our executive show on the board. Um about seventy-five percent of the state's retirement systems uh use a COLA base of at least thirteen thousand dollars, so we are. We're not sort of with necessarily with our peers on this, um but I think the board, the board understands the financial. Uh situation that the town is in, but wanted to make sure it was still putting forward um this motion that the board had intended to bring forth last spring. Um but when COVID hit, uh sort of kind of it sort of stepped back on it, but wanted to bring it back around, so just wanted to give that background as well.
And the other thing, the other item that this does that would change the year that we would be fully funded in our pensions from twenty thirty to twenty thirty-one, I believe. Uh and we also have a a large um not to crack with OPEB. Uh which we planned on starting to fund at a much higher rate once the pension fund is fully. Uh vested, which we were hoping would be twenty twenty-nine or twenty thirty, this would also put that off a year. Uh but we do think it's definitely something worthy that should be looked at again next year and hopefully would be in a better position to deal with it.
Okay, the motion is uh before the the council to raise the cost of living base from twelve thousand to thirteen thousand dollars. Uh the finance committee is. The finance committee is requesting a no vote. But it still comes before the council for a vote. Council Joe?
Just a question for the committee or through the chair to the CFO. What was the communication like with the town retirement board on this? Were they, is this something that they pushed strongly for or was there just any communication with them in general on this?
My understanding is now, and I'll get, we'll get more opinion from the CFO, but my understanding is obviously they, this is something that they desire. It's a good thing for the retirees. There's no, there's no real discussion on that. I do think from my understanding is that they understand the position of the town. And I think, you know, I'm not going to put words in their mouth that they're going to accept it, but I think they understand the position that the town's in. CFO?
Yeah, I think, I think the council and Terry, from my perspective as a, as a shield board member accurately summarized the conversations that the board has had on this. I think the board thinks it's important to bring this up and have the conversation about it and wanted to get it in front of the council. Since we, you know, we aren't, since we aren't one of the seventy-five percent of the, of the other retirement systems. And so we, you know, the board wants to make sure that it's supporting, supporting our retirees on this, but the board does understand the, the financial constraints the town is in. And I think, you know, would under, would understand, would understand a no vote on this, and I think would likely continue to recommend this at future opportunities arise, arise to recommend that.
Thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll put it to a vote. A yes vote means you do raise it from twelve thousand to thirteen and a no vote means you do not. All those in favor of a cost of living base moving, increasing the cost of living base from twelve to thirteen thousand, please signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor Jero?
No.
Council Placot?
No.
Counselor DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Leteri?
Uh, no.
Council Honan?
No.
Council LaConte?
No.
Council Frino?
No.
Vice President Christopher?
No.
President Boncory?
Yes. The nose have it, doesn't carry. Next motion coming up before the body is, the next issue on the agenda twelve F is the proposed trash rate. That's my understanding from the discussion that the finance committee had, you want to wait until the next meeting to discuss this?
Yes, I think what we wanted to do tonight, which would help out the CFO and, and the town manager get through their budget processes to direct the town manager to go ahead with the budget process with the idea that we are going to have a, a new enterprise fund for trash. That enterprise fund will have an appropriation from the town. And then the, the remainder would be comprised of a user fee, but we do want, we do have specific questions as to how to roll it out, when to initiate it, how payments would come, the amount of the payments, education of it and so on and so forth. So we would like, we wanted to give some clarity to the town manager and the direction we're heading, but we would like to have one more meeting to come back with more concise motion for the amount of the fee and how it would be enacted.
How, how have your meetings been attended by the public?
The first meeting of the last two, we had close to fifty, I think, at the first meeting and last night I think it was eighteen to twenty.
Okay, because there's very little participation on this meeting. I see we only have like seventeen people coming into the meeting as, as general public. And they knew that this issue was on there. So it's my concern is how much we need more from the public because I thought we had an idea that this was going to be like forty dollars a quarter plus a three dollar bag fee and hopefully let it go and to get it.
I don't think, there, there's no bag fee involved in this, at least at the begin, you know, there's no bag fee involved with this. We do, I, I think the, the thought of the committee would be even once we set this up to, to look more as, you know, I know Counselor Frino wants to look into a page you throw and, and you, you know, and something we could look at down the line, but this would not involve any bag fee. It would be just a flat fee, which would be roughly, you know, twenty-five, about thirty-two percent, thirty-three percent of the total cost of the contract. So this would be, and like you said, it could be forty dollars a quarter. It could be, you know, it could be a flat fee of a hundred and fifty for the year. We're not sure. And that's why we want to just work out the logistics also in starting the enterprise fund. If there's, you know, any administrative costs, we want to make sure, like you said, that it's not maybe getting the attention. I think it's something that I think we could all agree that nobody wants, but I think a lot of people understand that there's not a lot of option. So, and we don't want to force feed it to people. I think we want to take the time to educate them. So I, you know, I think we want to come back with a clear and concise motion to, to be able to answer any questions that might arise from this.
Okay, hopefully, because I don't want to tie up the, the budget process we have to go.
No, and I think that's why we wanted to give direction and we got, I think this, the CFO felt comfortable last night. The town manager was not able to attend last night, but I think the CFO felt comfortable that the direction that we're giving gives them clarity to, to do the budget process as if we were going to start an enterprise fund with appropriation. So, so they're going to be able to maintain their one point two six roughly million dollar appropriation from the town. With the, with the, with the difference from the contract, the variance from the contract would be taken up with the fee.
Okay, thank you. So we will put that, move it back onto all business?
Yes, for the next.
Next one's meeting with a motion to table it for the next meeting?
Yes.
Oh, motion been made by Counselor Terry to table this to the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No discussion on the motion table, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor Jero?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Council Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries table to next meeting with the with the other motion about trash. Moving forward, we will go to twelve G on the agenda. Town council vote to accept the recommendation from TSAC on Park Street. Counselor Christopher?
Sure. So the motion that was made and referred to the committee was that the town council accept the recommendation of the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee from the January twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting to correct ordinance language regarding the flow of one-way traffic on Park Avenue by amending section ten twenty-four ten of the town ordinances titled Schedule of One Way Streets as follows. To amend the following line from the table, Park Avenue from Crystal Cove Ave to Beacon Street to now read Park Ave from Beacon Street to Crystal Cove Ave.
Okay. Is that come out of committee? So that needs no follow second? Is there any discussion on it?
So this is.
Go ahead, Council, Vice President Christopher?
This is exactly the way we know it. If you've driven on these roads before, you know that the flow of traffic goes from Beacon to Crystal Cove Ave. And that's just what we're trying to do is to make our, our ordinances reflect what we have in practice currently. So no changes here, just making this reflection in our books.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor Jero?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Council Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is twelve H, the town council to address discussion of parking coming out of TSAC.
Yes, so like I talked about in my report, we had a general discussion about parking in the town as it relates to variances and special permits that are granted by the appeals board and the planning board in town. And that was a discussion that we had and, and I already explained what I felt like the council's role and that was. I know Mike Deluiso is on the call. If anybody does have any questions, he reached out earlier in the day to me to say that he was open to any questions that you had. If, or any discussion that you'd like to have on general parking as it relates to that in town.
Okay, is there any motion before the council on this?
No.
Okay. Did you want to have Mike Deluiso's hand is up? He's on? Mike, are you on?
I am here, sir. Good evening. If anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to take.
Okay, would you just, you know, like quickly give an update what TSAC is looking for here?
Yes, so what this was, this came out of discussion in our, originally from our November meeting, it was carried over to our February meeting. We were finding that there were some issues in some neighborhoods where Board of Appeals or Board of Planning Board, I'm not sure which one was granting some relief to onsite parking requirements. And the problem that we were running into is that the neighborhood simply can't accommodate that parking on street. So what we're looking to do is pass this information on to those boards essentially say, you know, hey, listen, we know this is your decision to make. This is the problem that we are having that keeps coming back to us when some of these decisions are made. We'd like you to take a look at what the availability of on-street parking is when you're making some of these decisions. And we'd be more than willing to help get you that information to help them, those boards make those decisions. All we're asking them to do is take a look at that. It is done up to those boards as to whether or not they choose to do that in their decision-making process.
Okay, there's, the, the next item on the agenda is also from TSAC, which is a Point Shirley resident parking pilot. And want to also speak on that. There, there are no motions in front of us, but this is also a report that you have submitted to us. You want to speak on that, Mike?
Um, yeah, that was a, a very detailed report. I think it was a nine-page report with about fifty pages of sworn documentation. In short, TSAC took a look at the, the pilot. We took a look at the public input that came in both verbally at our hearings as well as what came in in writing. After we discussed it as a committee, we believe that ultimately this is going to come down to a policy decision from the council and or the manager. We definitely believe that the residents of the point were in favor of the program. However, we did see a number of issues come up and a number of concerns. You know, not the least of which was, you know, there was some oversight when we were figuring out visitor parking. And one of the big concerns about TSAC as far, and one of the reasons why we didn't make a recommendation to go forward this right now is basically we're, by enacting this, we're excluding anyone who doesn't live in the town from being able to use any of those public resources such as Yarol Beach, Cofflin Playground, the shoreline, and to a lesser extent, Deer Island, even though that's not within our jurisdiction. And we're concerned with putting these restrictions in place without coming up with additional parking for those people to utilize. We shouldn't, we kind of felt that we shouldn't be excluding somebody from being able to go out and visit Cofflin Park if maybe they grew up here just because they no longer live here. And the other piece of that came down to, you know, some public safety concerns where a lot of the people we spoke of wanted to expand it to include Yarol Beach. Then there was the concern of where those people want to use the beach move to without impacting public safety issues in some of the other neighborhoods. And there was also a, a funding issue where one of the biggest complaints we received during these hearings was regarding enforcement and signage. And, you know, if, if this was going to become a permanent program, we would need funding for, to purchase, install and maintain signage. And the level of enforcement that people seem to want and would expect if such a program were to go into place cannot be handled without additional funding. That was what basically came out of TSAC. But ultimately, this is up to the council to make a policy decision on how you want to handle this. As was stated, there are similar issues in other areas of town, such as anywhere where any of the yacht clubs and marinas are during the summer. We acknowledge the fact that the point does have a number of those resources in a small area, so they do have a, a little bit more of a burden, but it is not completely unique to them and it's up to the council to choose how they want to move forward. If the council does choose to move forward with this, we will obviously do our best to make that work, but there are definitely a lot of things that need to be decided before anything can happen.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Does anybody have any questions for Michael? I mean, there's no motion in front of us. These are reports that are being submitted by TSAC to the council, which maybe I would send to rules and orders to look at to see if there is some way we can put a, a new ordinance in to address some of these issues, whether it's to redo the pilot program or whatever. But I'll send the, the two reports to rules and ordinance. But does anybody have any questions on of Michael on these two reports? Yeah, Council Frino?
Mike, thank you for enlightening us and all the work you do. I was just, I don't think we can do a stickers down the landing because it's a state property. Is that correct?
That is my understanding because it's a state boat ramp. We have a land use agreement between this town and the state, but there are still CMRs and other regulations that govern what that parking can and can't be used for. And there's a certain percentage of that land that needs to be maintained for boat use for parking.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Council Director Cala is on the line and I had talked to him about putting some parking at Yarol Beach for some time and it, I know we looked into it and there's, there's kind of a bit of an expense to it. So it's not coming forward yet. But I also want to know if there was any possibility of putting some parking at Cofflin Park. See, do you think there is a, a way to put parking on the right side of that?
There is.
Park as you drive in?
Yeah, we looked, we looked into it before. It, there's certainly room there, you know, to, to, to put some parking in there. You, you know, you, you're in the buffer zone, so there is permitting that would have to, have to get through. Not unlike the same permitting that you would have to do at Yarol Beach. Depending on how many spots you're looking to do there, I, I think you can get a lot more spots at Yarol Beach. We, we do have a, we've done some, some preliminary engineering work there and you know, we, we do have a a rendition of, of, of what could be done over on, on Yarol. I can certainly go through a similar exercise at Cofflin. I've just kind of got to get an understanding on how many spots you're, you're looking to accommodate there. I know Parks and Rec still does run programs down there and we don't want to take up all the green space. I guess that would be a decision, you know, what we're looking to do there.
But part of the problem is when they run a program there and, and now until the dog park gets opened up in, in May or June, a lot of people are up there walking dogs and there is no place to park up there. So I don't know what we could fit in. I think I, you take a look at it to see if you could fit ten, six, you know, fifteen, whatever, whatever you think you could fit there. You know, the area where we're talking is to where the floats drive in during the Fourth of July to the right.
Yep.
Can we take a look at that and see if we can come up with anything there?
Sure, take a look at it.
Thank you. All right, anybody have any other questions on TSAC? Are there issues of parking or Point Shirley? No, we'll move forward then. Next item on the agenda is motion by Counsel Christopher that the town manager, director town manager to provide a twenty-five percent discount on licensing fees for the next fiscal year for the licensees that were not able to operate their business due to restrictions associated with COVID pandemic. That is seconded by Counsel DeMarco. Did that go to the finance committee?
It did.
Okay.
You want a, a report on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, that did come to the finance committee. Again, similar to the retiree motion, it, it has merits to it. But again, we're in a situation where fiscally we have mid-level managers who have earned longevity bonuses who are being frozen and they're not getting them. So I, I think we find it hard to, you know, there's a lot of, it, it's been terrible. I mean, you know, as a business owner, I know it's, it's been a miserable year. But the government does have programs where Um but the government does have programs where they are offering PPP and other um small business loans and such. Um you know, the merits will say that this is a relatively small amount of money, but you know, I'll look at the longevity payments that are being withheld and that's a relatively small amount of money and you know, so the the finance committee did not come back with a positive recommendation on this.
Okay, so the finance committee came back with a negative recommendation on it. Is there any other further discussion on it, Council Christopher?
Sure. Um so I think if if you look at it from the perspective of businesses paid for something and were not able to use it. Uh I think it's irresponsible for us to kind of just turn a blind eye to that. Just basic principles of equity would say we we license them to do something they weren't able to do it. I think this is different from the last uh motion that was brought up, where we had to make tough financial decisions. And I appreciate that we're in tough financial times. But it's different because I think that that would have had much longer term repercussions than what we're talking about. Um and also, I think, y- you know, I I see the trash motions that we had just taken up and the trash fee motions, and I I totally appreciate that. Um but I think it's it's not the right way to go if we're going to try to tie the current financial situation and with this, which would impact us in the next fiscal year. Um the fact of the matter is, is that I'm almost sure, we do this at every budget process, when we start moving around money at the end of it based off of values that we have and thoughts that we we should be funding different things in different ways. And that's fine. That's what we're supposed to do. A budget is about values at the end of the day. But what I'm saying here is is that this is a gesture of goodwill from the town to a group of individuals who've had a really tough year and they should be able to at least in some way feel like where we have their back and that they're able to get something better, get a payment, not even a payment, get some type of relief because they weren't able to operate their business. And I'm not talking about reduced capacity or anything. This is people who are just not able to operate. Um and and that's really what I think that this motion should will do. And that's why I think it should be passed.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on? So any?
Through through the through the president to the vice to Vice President Christopher, I just for clarity, are you saying that you would like to provide a discount to only the businesses who were not able to open for the year, for the fiscal year twenty-one? Or for every business?
The businesses who were at some point in the past year due to COVID nineteen had to shut their doors, period, end of story. If you had to do that at a certain point, I think that you are entitled to to something and not not necessarily entitled, but should be based off of principles of equity. We gave you a license to do something. For a portion of the year, you weren't able to do that. That that's all I'm saying here.
A- and and we did discuss this and we did discuss the equity of it and um there are businesses that have shut down a day because of it. There are businesses that were open, however, that a bigger percentage of their business wasn't able to be in in terms of liquor sales or whatever. Uh sit down, dine in versus eat a versus carry out and such. Um you know, but again, the the feeling on the committee was that there have been a lot of uh devices available to businesses, small businesses and individuals um through the federal government that has been able to to maintain them and and it is a relatively I don't think the Council Vice President set a figure, but it's a it's a relatively small figure. I mean, I don't think the Council Vice President is asking for a hundred thousand dollars here. It's a relatively small amount of money, probably under ten thousand dollars. Um you know, and I I would just go back to other individual items on the on the budget that we have that, you you know, the the management has decided not to pay out, which is you know, it it goes against. I understand totally understand your motion. I I just I personally don't feel it's appropriate and the committee voted no on.
Okay, all right, so we we is there any other discussion? What what I take it the motion is is that for the year twenty twenty-two, with the town manager to discount twenty-five percent uh of the licensing fee for all the restaurants, is that correct?
Hmm, no, not necessarily just for restaurants. If you were shut down for a period of time and not able to use it. A- and I I think that on some level, you need to give the town manager discretion to operate this. But that, yes, I think restaurants are definitely a part of what I'm asking for here. They're definitely uh so an industry that was hit as hard as any other in uh industry, and I think that they should be given some consideration for that because they're like they're license holders from the town.
But you don't, you you're not applying this to a store where someone might have got COVID enclosed for three weeks because they got COVID themselves.
Again, I
Talking about people who the the regulation.
Not necessarily. I think that the town manager can can in his discretion uh run this um and apply that discount in the next fiscal year. If if a business was shut down due to COVID regulations, um I'm not going to sit here and start making judgments for each and every individual business that could have potentially run into an issue with COVID over the past year. I think he can do that in his discretion.
Okay. Okay. Uh Council with Jero. And Anna, I'll get you next.
Uh Mike, my question was actually uh through the chair uh to the CFO. Um do we do we have a ballpark figure on this? Council has here had mentioned something uh sub ten thousand dollars, but uh has any any um calculation been done? Um that we know the bottom line of this potentially?
So if we, if the motion is only for the calculation, we didn't focus on um licenses for restaurants, like liquor licenses, and so that calculation is around ten thousand dollars. If we're speaking about businesses more generally, I don't have a calculation for that. Um I think uh just so the council can weigh some implications for the budget on this. Um this is a little bit wonky, but so for next year, what this would it uh what this would mean that we would need to do in the manager's budget would be we would need to come up with some sort of estimate for what kind of impact that could have, and we would need to adjust downward those revenue source codes, which means we would need to make, we would need to make commensurate cuts. So even say it's just ten thousand dollars. We would need to cut ten thousand dollars out of the manage, like the the FY twenty-two budget proposal. One thing that may help address this issue, but in a different way, is um the American Rescue Plan money that the manager uh spoke about earlier. Uh we are accepting significant resources to arrive to the town that um is represented, that we believe is supposed to be sort of spent on COVID nineteen sort of recovery efforts um gen- generally. Uh we don't have specific guidance on that, but in general, based on sort of how we understand the language to be written in the legislation. There that may provide an opportunity to set up uh potentially like business relief type programming that wouldn't affect the town's bottom line in any way, but could potentially provide the type of relief that I think maybe is the that is that if I'm understanding the motion, sort of the intent of the motion, and so that may be that may be something that I think we could, that we could, you know, absolutely look into um and setting up something there so that it wouldn't the relief for the relief for the businesses in the community that have that have suffered um wouldn't also impact um making additional cuts on the town's budget as well.
And I I would just like to be clear, I'm comfortable with limiting it to restaurants. I just don't know that it's our job as a council to be making those decisions. That that's my only point with that. So I'm comfortable with it being just restaurants. It it just, it I I don't know that we're in the right, we're the right body to be determining that.
Okay, is the town manager ready to be doing that?
So it it uh I respect the uh Vice President Christopher's uh thoughts on this. Um it gets it gets a little tricky. Um I I kind of always talk with you about the inform and facilitate part of my position and not necessarily making judgment calls and the value calls that you all um are elected to do. Um I I would say um it's something we can look into. Um I think that maybe if we uh refined it a little bit to determine which businesses we were looking um to most effectively support, maybe that um would just help my office to have a little bit more um discretion on it. Um I uh uh I don't want the a lot of interpretation to be left up onto my office to determine um on like a case-by-case basis, who should be getting money or not. Um I just don't necessarily think that um we should be, uh my office should be chicken picking like winners and losers with this money. Um so I think that there's a couple of different ways of going about it. I think what um Anna Friedman brought up concerning the American um Rescue Plan, I think that we could use some of our local aid that we got from that to try to support the local business community and set up some rules about that. Um I would be um also agree in agreement with Anna concerning uh being reticent about um cutting that revenue from the budget. Um so it's one of those, um I understand the intent and I agree with the intent. Um it's figuring out uh the most feasible way to get to those types of ends of supporting the businesses. Um the cut, the rebate on the fee may not be the best way to do it, but I think there may be uh different ways of going about achieving the same ends. Um so I I'm open to it. It's just the um figuring out the best way, what the funding source would be, how would we distribute the money, um and then trying a little bit. We have to make some judgment calls. I I would like you all to make some types of judgment calls on it because this gets um I get scared when things are slippery slope um type of areas of a lot of um different type of individuals or businesses thinking that um they would be applicable to this type of money. And um that gets a little uh dicey from my estimation. Uh so again, it's something that um I I'm not like for against. It's just figuring out the best way to make it feasible um so we can support the business community.
Okay, anyone else want to be here on this? Okay. Uh the motion before us is it's council directed town manager to to provide a twenty-five percent discount on licensing fees for the next fiscal year, so that would be twenty twenty-two for the licensees that were not able to operate their business due to restrictions associated with COVID pandemic for the last year. Went to finance, finance is recommending a no vote on it.
Council President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to send this to the Rules and Ordinances Committee. Um I think that this has become more of an issue about policy, uh or at least the way that it's being framed right now. And we could help uh try to shape that in a way that would help the town administrators uh administer a program such as this.
Okay. Been made uh by Council Christopher to send this back to uh Rules and Ordinance for review. It was seconded by Council General. Did you have your hand up, Council Terry?
I did. Any motion that concerns finances for the town or for the town's budget needs to go through finance. I would, I would, I would happily have a joint meeting or I the Vice President to maybe amend his motion to direct the town manager to look at the new resources that he's been given through the government and to try to find a way to use that money to to satisfy your motion.
There there was only one motion in front of us at the present time and it it already went to finance. You came back with
I'm saying to amend, I'm saying if he if he chose to amend his motion to direct
If it comes back amended, we'll send it back to finance. Okay. So a motion has been made to send this motion as it stands to Rules and Ordinance. It's already been to finance and finance has already made a recommendation. So I don't think it has to go back on this motion. If another different motion comes forward, it'll go back to finance. But on the on the motion to send it to Rules and Ordinance, all those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Council Righiro?
Yes.
Councila Flacot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Councila Terry?
No.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Councila Conti?
Yes.
Council Freno?
No.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes, motion carries. We sent to finance. Uh next item on the agenda. And God, we're done with the old business and we move forward to new business. And the new business is a motion to transfer fifteen thousand dollars for pest control. Uh Yeah, yes, I think the next motion is a motion to transfer nineteen thousand two hundred and eleven for harbor master engine engine replacement. And the next is a motion to transfer fifty thousand for capital stabilization for Ingleside Park Playground repairs. I will uh send all three of those motions to finance. Council DeMarco, do you have your hand up for some reason? We don't need a motion if I send them to
No, no, I underst- I understand that, uh President Boncory. My question is um is is um, you know, the last time we had funds transferred from stabilization to build a park, you know, the park was it was a danger. We did it as an emergency motion. I don't know if doing that would move up the the estimated start date. Uh town manager fires on, you could probably tell me about that. I mean, if 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 not, then forget, forget I'm even saying anything, but if we could pick up the pace and ask it as an emergency motion, maybe we could get the ground broken sooner.
Um I uh I don't think that's a possibility. I don't think this is an emergency. I I we're getting this done as quickly as possible. I don't think this is the same situation that it's a hazard to people's health and okay. Emergency motion.
Yeah, this this one is roped off. It's unable to be used. Whereas the other one was a danger. Okay.
Okay, thank you, President Boncory.
Right. Uh next thing is a date for the spring forum. Motion uh to held that we hold the spring forum on four twenty twenty-one. Okay.
Council President, that would actually be the same date that I'd be presenting the budget as well.
Yes.
The budget presentation and the spring forum would be on the same date.
Okay, so on our four twenty meeting, it will be the spring forum and there will be a budget uh presentation. I don't, and but that will not be the official um giving of the budget.
In fact, it's not the submission of the budget, correct?
Okay, all right. All right, but we will uh hear both things of the spring forum on the twentieth.
Uh one other item too is that uh uh this isn't town manager CFO Friedman um will have uh information available for Citizens Finance and the Finance Committee in advance of those dates as well. Uh it may not be the complete budget document itself, but um it will be um a large amount of information that they're able to start um learning about our financial status and um can start thinking through some of their decision-making process over the month of uh April, I would say.
I'm I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Uh is the Finance Commission, I was going to ask that. Are you saying that they will be given some information at an earlier date?
Um I would say Anna has um information that she'll be able to make available to uh the Finance Committee and Citizens Finance um in terms of memos and reports um on the entire budget document itself.
Yeah, can we just have a date on that? When that would be available?
Um Anna, do you want to, do you have a date in mind for that? I don't want to commit without you um saying what date you
Yeah, I think I think we should commit to the um the end of the first week in April. I at that point, we the budget will be balanced and so it's the original sort of week that I think we were um that we were looking at, so we can, we can get a a report to um to Citizens Finance that week.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, it it's uh potentially, if Thursday is possible, that would potentially be ideal because we might be getting some additional guidance on a couple of things earlier in that week that we have any last-minute adjustment to make, but we can get a um we can get a full line on a report. I'll have a line on a report for um for Citizens Advisory.
Thank you. Okay. Um we will also be having a joint public hearing with the Planning Board on the middle school zoning issue. And that meeting will be held on Thursday, four twenty-two. So in that meeting uh next month, we're meeting on the twentieth, the spring forum and on the twenty-second, so we have back-to-back meetings, Tuesday and Thursday. Okay. Uh I have appointments. I have uh three appointments that I would like to make. And uh the first one is to appoint Kevin Janelleus of Fifty-Two Undine Street as a constable. Sid Janelleus uh as a constable. Sid Janelle, uh, I believe serves on the town as an assistant harbor master. And uh, he also has a, uh, he's a licensed private investigator, and he does special security assignments for Boston and surrounding areas. He's asked to be appointed constable. And I uh, so appoint him, I, I would ask for approval, Council, I'll pass the gavel to Council Vice President Christopher.
Is there any uh discussion about the appointment? Okay, seeing none, uh, will the clerk please call the role on the appointment?
Do we need a second for this?
I don't, I don't think we do, but I will second it.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Council President has the right to make appointment.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Thank you. Counselor Jero?
Yes.
Counselor Flotkot?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Conti?
Yes.
Counselor Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes, absolutely. I have one other, uh, of, of, well, I have two other appointments. The next appointment I have is to the uh Diversity and Inclusion Committee, and I am appointing Mai Ex Nujen. Mai is the owner of a Stan Neils at the Bridge. She's been a Winthrop president for over ten years. She built a beautiful house uh on Cross Street. Uh, she's a young Asian-American woman. And I think at this time, uh, with what's going on in the country, she's a perfect appointment to be on this Diversity Committee. So I ask that you support her, her appointment.
Okay, is there any discussion about the appointment? Let's put it forward with. Okay, seeing none, will clerk please call the roll?
Sure, Counselor Jero?
Yes.
Counselor Flotkot?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Conti?
Yes.
Counselor Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes. And my final appointment is to appoint Counselor Even Ruggiero to the Board of Capic. Former Councilor Nick Devento was a representative of the Winthrop uh Town Council on that board for many years. Uh, his term is up, and I have to be a counselor or an administrator, and I have decided to appoint Counselor Ruggiero.
Okay, so there is a nomination. Is there any discussion on the nomination of Counselor Jero? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Jero? Have it. Counselor Flotkot?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Um, yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Conti?
Yes.
Counselor Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I will.
Can I have the gavel back?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, we're now open up to uh public comment. Again, the number is one six four six five five eight eight six five six with an ID number of eight two three three one one nine one one two zero pound. Hopefully, we have some people that are on public comment. And I don't see any hands up. Oh, here we go. We, someone?
Wendy Miller Page.
Hi Wendy.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, thank you uh to the town manager for uh adding me to the Zero Waste Committee. It's something that I've been very passionate about. My uh nickname of recycling Wendy's gonna get a lot of use, I think, in the next few months. Um, but I did want to mention something to Vice President Christopher, just to take as a note. Um, one of the things that we did in Revere, and I know that we're looking at the um, the relief money as a potential way for the, the, to add some relief to the businesses. One of the things that we did was take the, anyone that was having a renewed common vic license. And I think in Winthrop, it's only like fifty dollars a business, um, at least on the old fee schedule that I have. Um, and that, that might be a way. It's a small extension, but that could be something that could be looked at is just for the next year. Figuring out a way to not make that, you know, a fee, and it's waived. There's things like that, and I did help um, another city work on that. So if you want to reach out to me, please feel free. I have no, I would love to chat if you have some questions. Um, and then the other thing with the, the discussions that we're having um, about the trash and the way to go with trash and the, a lot of the feedback that we're seeing out there is that, yeah, it's something that's being quote-unquote crammed down our throats. Um, however, at the same time, um, I think we need to really take a step back from any, anything that we might feel in our heart is the right thing to do right now and get some more um education for the, you know, for the Finance Committee, for the Zero Waste Committee, to sit down and possibly meet together to have a dialogue about um, all the different potential that's there. Um, and really be open-minded to what some of the other communities are doing. Um, and that's, those are my, those are my commentary for the day.
Thank you, Wendy. Is there anyone else?
Danny.
I see some members of the Diversity Committee on, and I know that they put together a statement that may be in the paper today. And I know Andrea uh could not be on because she's on a panel with a, a historic woman of Boston or some, some such thing tonight. Uh, any other member of the Diversity Committee that is on like to be heard about that statement that's coming out? All right, it's uh, any, uh, anyone else? You see anyone else? Denise?
Um, no. Larissa, I see no hands. You see any hands?
No hands.
No hands.
Okay, well, then that's it. Public comment. Uh, does any council have any public comment we'd like to say? Hearing none, public relations, we still have openings on the Airport Hazards Committee, Board of Appeals. And uh, we have an opening on T-SAC. So if anybody's interested, please fill out an application. I want to fill up the rest of these appointments as soon as we can. If hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded. Before we adjourn, don't forget, Spring Forum is the twentieth of April. And uh, this, the middle school zoning is the twenty-second of April. Those are two very important meetings. We, we will be having a meeting at the beginning of, of, of April as well, but those are very important meetings. I hope we get a good turnout for them.
Vote next week.
Yes, please. Vote uh on Tuesday, the thirtieth. Please go and vote. Uh, Precincts one, two, and five are at the old middle school gymnasium next to the rink, which will be clear. Uh, Precinct four, I believe, is in the C, uh, in the Golden Drive, O'Connell Hall. And three and six are at the Senior Center. Okay, so please uh get out and vote on Tuesday. All right, all those in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye when your name is called.
Counselor Jero?
Yes.
Counselor Flotkot?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Conti?
Yes.
Counselor Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please be safe. Have a good week.